Good evening, welcome to the April 20th, 2020 Meeting of the Pacifica Planning Commission, which we're conducting pursuant to a video teleconference. And I am going to provide some additional information given the format that we're proceeding under. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N 2520 and M 3920, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act, the orders of the Health Officer of San Mateo County dated March 16th, 2020, and March 31st, 2020, as this meeting is necessary that the city, so that the City of Pacifica can conduct necessary business, and it's permitted under the orders as an essential government function. Commissioners, Deputy City Attorney, and City Staff essential to the meeting will be video teleconferencing into the meeting, and there will be no physical location open to the public. The public can observe the meeting via cable or via live stream while sheltering at home. The meeting may be observed again live on local TV Channel 26 or online at www.cityofpacifica.org/livestream. With respect to public comment, they may be submitted during the meeting by emailing comments to publiccomment@ci.pacifica.ca.us. For this commission meeting, public comment may be made only on items that are on the agenda. Please indicate in the email subject line the agenda item number or note oral communications, and in the email content provide your full name, meeting date, agenda item number, or oral communications in quotes, and specify whether you would like your comments read into the record during the meeting. Comments should be limited to comply with the three-minute time limitation. The total duration of all public comments for each agenda item, including oral communications, will be limited to 30 minutes, or subject to the Chair's discretion. Your entire electronic comment may or may not be read into the record due to time limitations imposed, and comments expressing similar positions may be summarized or a bridge to provide for a greater number of individual comments, but your written comments will become part of the record and will be available for public inspection. With all that said, I'm going to go ahead and ask staff to do a roll call.
Thank you Chair. Commissioner Berman.
Present.
Commissioner Big Stick.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Krasky.
Present.
Commissioner Niblin.
Here.
Okay, thank you. So then we'll move on to the salute to the flag. I think I'll go ahead and ask Commissioner Big Stick to lead us in the salute to the flag. And ask everybody to rise and please put your hands over your heart.
That's my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty, best for all.
Thank you Commissioner Big Stick. We'll move on then to administrative business, and the first item under administrative business is the approval of, I'm sorry, approval of the order of agenda. Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda? Commissioner Big Stick.
I move to approve the order of agenda.
Is there a second to?
Yeah, a second.
Excellent, great. We've got a motion in a second. All of the votes that we take are going to be by roll call, so I'll go ahead and ask staff to go ahead and take a roll call.
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick.
Yeah.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Krasky.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed.
Thank you very much. So we've approved the order of agenda unanimously. There are no minutes to approve this evening. There's no need for a designation of liaison to the City Council meeting. Does that remain the case?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. We'll move on then to oral communication, and this is the portion of the agenda that's available to the public to address the Planning Commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes, again, subject to the various matters that I read at the outset of the meeting. I'm curious about whether or not we've received any emails at this point under oral communication.
We have not.
Okay, very good. We'll go ahead then and move past this item since we've received no items for oral communication. I'll confirm that there are no consent items.
That is correct.
Thank you. That will then take us to our new public hearings. The first public hearing that we have is CAP 1319, PE 78920, and this is a cannabis activity permit and a parking exception filed by West Manor LLC for establishment of a cannabis manufacturing operation located at 901 Palmetto Avenue, Unit B, Assessor's Parcel Number 009244010, with the recommended sequel action if not applicable. The recommended action, I understand, is to continue to a future meeting. I'll go ahead and ask staff to talk us through this.
Thank you Chair. Good evening Commissioners and members of the public. I'm Senior Planner Christian Murdock. This item is complete and was ready for a public hearing. However, as staff worked through some of the details of the findings applicable to the cannabis activity permit and parking exception, we reached out to the applicant for some additional information. And so, in furtherance of providing what staff has requested to fully evaluate the application, the applicant has asked for additional time to prepare those materials and submit them for city review. So with that in mind, we don't want to pick a specific hearing date depending on the outcome of the information that we receive and our ability to timely review it, and so we're requesting to continue to a future date to be determined. Once staff believes the item is ready to bring forward for public hearing, we will issue the appropriate public notices in the newspaper and by mailing as required by law.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments before I ask for a motion?
And Chair, there are no public comments on this item as well.
Thank you Christian. You know, actually, just as a technical matter, I know we were going to use the raise hand function, but I don't actually see anything down at the bottom here to indicate a raised hand.
So if you click on Participants, there should be the little number 10 next to a couple people.
Got it. Thank you.
Then you can see the raised hand.
I'm set now. Thank you. Commissioner Campbell, did you have a comment or question?
No, no, I don't know. I'm going to lower my hand. I think that was by accident.
Thanks so much. I don't see any, I don't see anybody with any comments or questions, and we don't have any comments or questions from, from the public. I entertain a motion if somebody wants to make one to continue the item. Commissioner Big Stick.
I make a motion to continue the item to a future meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Berman.
Second the motion.
Great. We've got a motion in a second. We'll go ahead and ask for a roll call vote then.
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick.
Yeah.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Krasky.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
Motion passes, five votes in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. That item then is continued and appreciated. That takes us then to our second new public hearing, and this is file number 2019 015, Coastal Development Permit CDP 40519 filed by Karen Thompson to construct a 360 square foot, one-story addition to an existing 815 square foot, single-family residence with 288 square foot, one-car garage located on a 5,000 square foot lot at 316 San Pedro Avenue, APN 023018220. The recommended sequel action on this is a Class 1 categorical exemption, Sequel Guidelines, Section 15301, and the recommended action is to approve as conditioned. I'll go ahead and ask for a staff report on the matter.
Thank you. Good evening Planning Commissioners. Kristi Usher, Contract Planner for the City of Pacifica. As just mentioned, the application for your consideration tonight is a coastal development permit for the construction of a 300 square foot, one-story addition to an existing single-family dwelling with one-car garage located at 316 San Pedro Avenue in the Pedro Point Shelter Cove neighborhood. The project site is 5,000 square feet and slopes upward from the front of the property towards the rear of the project site. The proposed materials and colors will match the existing house, resulting in an appearance of a well-integrated addition. The roof pitch and materials of the addition will also match the existing roof material and color. The project site is own, single-family residential, and land uses surrounding the project site consist predominantly of single-family residences. However, commercial and mixed-use sites also exist in the project vicinity. The city received a comment letter regarding the proposed project, and this comment letter is provided as an attachment to the staff report. The project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act because it includes construction of additions to an existing single-family residence in a zone which permits residential uses. As described in the staff report, the proposed project complies with the city's development standards, design guidelines, and local coastal program. Therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the proposed project. That concludes the staff presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the owner and architect are also available tonight for your questions and comments. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for that report. Any questions from any of the Commissioners regarding the, regarding the report?
Chair, this is Senior Planner Murdock. I do have a presentation from Kristi Usher. I'm not sure if it came through on everybody's screens, but there are a couple slides to help the commission and the public visualize the project. If that's of interest to the commission, we may need to have PCTV focus on my screen and allow me to just flip through the slides briefly as Kristi directs.
Okay. That sounds good. Is that something we're going to do now or when it comes time for the applicant to present?
I'll defer to Kristi if there's anything she wants to talk through specific on the slides.
No, I don't think so. Thank you though.
Thank you. Commissioner Big Stick, I see you have your hand up. Do you have a question for staff?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One is very minor, and the other one, the other one's more interesting. So first of all, is that, I guess it's a private street, the Shelter Cove Road? And in the staff report, it says that the only street between the proposed development and the ocean is San Pedro. I'm wondering if Shelter Cove factors into that, or because it's private, it doesn't factor into that?
So Commissioner Big Stick, I think what you may be referring to is the finding related to application of the public recreation policies of Chapter 3 of the Coastal Act. And for purposes of that policy, the language is limited to public roads, which is why we focused in on San Pedro Avenue.
Okay. Makes sense. So my other question is, and I appreciate I can't really factor it in, but I think it, I think it's a question that should be asked. Does this project agree with the updated LCP?
I don't think any of us have done the analysis of that for purposes of specific policies in the draft, LCLUP. The City Council has approved the document, but it's not in force and effect yet because the city, because the Coastal Commission rather, has not certified it, and so we can find our analysis to the current 1980 LCP for purposes of this permit.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other Commissioners with comments or hands up at this point, so I guess then we'll move on to the next segment, which is to allow the applicant the opportunity to present on the, on the project. Is the applicant present to make a presentation?
Yes Chair, we have Karen Thompson, who's the property owner, and Stephen Clark, who's the architect assisting with the application. I'm not sure which of them have chosen to speak, but we'll give them that opportunity now.
Excellent. Well, good evening Ms. Thompson, Mr. Clark.
I don't, I've never done this before, so I don't really have a presentation presented or, you know, prepared, but I'm happy to answer any questions. I appreciate all the help that Kristi's given me, so.
Thank you. Mr. Clark, anything to add? You're muted. There you go.
There we go. Okay, sorry. Nothing significant to add. I feel it's a very straightforward project. We just, like she said, we just try to stay within the palette of existing house, you know, just make it look as seamless as possible. So really nothing to add.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Did we have, we'll move on then to, to public comment, and Mr. Murdock, do we have any comments besides those that have been received prior to the hearing?
We do not, Chair.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead then and close this segment of the, of the item and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioners, any comments or questions at this juncture? Commissioner Big Stick.
I think it was nice to see any kind of development in San Pedro that, that wasn't contentious. And then after that, I, since there was a bit in there about the roof, I was kind of just had a slight curiosity if Commissioner Berman actually had any feedback on the roof itself, but otherwise, I don't see any reason not to vote for this project.
Thank you Commissioner Big Stick.
Thanks Tiger for the call out. Although I'm not, I'm a civil engineer, not an architect, so I don't typically deal with structure design and roof design. However, I did find it very interesting when I reviewed the material, and I liked that it's a lighter material, which helps reduce heat island effect, which I think is great. But it looked very interesting, and I'm certainly one for innovative, new materials when it comes to development. So I think this was a great opportunity to kind of see how it works out. Actually, kind of dovetailing off of that, Mr. Clark, or I guess, am I allowed to ask a question of the applicant? I guess what was the main reason to use a new material for the roof?
The roof that, that we chose is actually the roof that's currently on the house. So we wanted it to match the existing. So when I purchased the house, the previous owner had already changed the roof to this material, so we're matching the existing roof.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks Ms. Thompson. I don't see any other comments or questions at the moment. Certainly, a motion would be in order if my colleague, Mr. Clark. Commissioner Big Stick.
Chair, I'll be happy to make the motion. I move that the Planning Commission finds the project as exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approves the coastal development permit CDP-405-19 by adopting the attached resolution, including conditions of approval on Exhibit A, incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Commissioner Big Stick. Commissioner Campbell.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So we've got a motion and we've got a second. I'd ask staff to go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick.
Yeah.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Krasky.
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin.
Yes.
Motion passes, five votes in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. So item number two is unanimously approved, and we'll move on then to item three. Thank you Ms. Thompson, Mr. Clark.
Thank you very much.
So item number three is file number 2018 008, Use Permit UP 9618 filed by Modus LLC on behalf of Verizon Wireless for construction of a wireless communications facility on an existing utility pole in the public right-of-way of Terranova Boulevard, approximately 870 feet north of Everglades Drive in the vicinity of 1450 Terranova Boulevard. This is Assessor Parcel Number 022310300, and the recommended sequel action is a Class 3 categorical exemption, Sequel Guidelines, Section 15303, and the recommended action is to approve as conditioned. I think what we'll do then is go ahead and ask for a staff report on this item.
Thank you Chair. Kristi, if I could just for a moment. Joanna and Bill, welcome to the meeting. Is there anybody else, and Jake as well, anybody else on your team? There is one individual in the waiting room whose name I do not recognize, so I want to make sure you have your full complement here.
Hi. Hi Christian. Hi Commissioners. No, that is everybody on our end.
Okay, great. So Kristi, before we proceed, if you could let me know whether to pull up the presentation and have our production team focus in on it, or if you just want to give the oral presentation current.
Honestly, either way is fine. You know, my presentation speaks to like a variety of slides, so it might be a little, a little tricky to kind of look through, but, but they're welcome too. It would be instructive.
Why don't we give it a try then?
Okay.
Due to the technical setup here, I can't completely maximize to show the presentation. Hopefully, this will be good enough if we can ask PCTV to go ahead and focus on my screen here as I go ahead and share it. Anybody able to see the 1450 Terranova presentation?
Yeah, I can see it.
Great. And Director Waremeister, might you confirm if you're still monitoring the live stream, if it's showing up for the public?
Yes, I will, I need to go back, but I will do that in just a second if you want to go ahead and start.
Great, thank you. Kristi, please go ahead.
Okay. The application for your consideration tonight is a use permit to install a new wireless communication facility within the public right-of-way of Terranova Boulevard in the vicinity of Terranova High School at 1450 Terranova Boulevard. The proposed project is a small cell facility. Unlike conventional macro facilities that feature multiple large panel antennas with large ground-mounted equipment enclosures, small cell facilities are low-powered cellular radio access nodes that consist of small radio equipment and antennas that can be placed on structures such as streetlights, sides of buildings, buildings or utility poles. The proposed cellular facility is not a 5G site. Instead, the radios proposed are all 4G radios that will transmit in accordance with 4G frequencies and bands. The proposed small cell facility includes a two-foot tall and one-foot diameter, diameter cylindrical antenna mounted atop a five-foot tall pole extension attached to an existing utility pole. Associated radio equipment is proposed to be mounted lower on the pole, but at a minimum distance of eight feet from grade. The proposed antenna installation would yield an approximately 70, or I'm sorry, approximately seven-foot high height increase above the existing approximately 38-foot tall pole, inclusive of the antenna, pole extension, and assembly brackets for mounting to the existing pole. So the resulting pole height would be approximately 45 feet to the top of the cylindrical antenna. The proposed pole extension is required by the California Public Utilities Commission to provide for safety clearance from live wires. The radio frequency report on file for the proposed cellular site indicates that the project complies with FCC standards for maximum exposure levels. Specifically, the report found that the project's emissions will be well below the FCC maximum exposure levels for any person at the ground or at the nearest building. For any person at the ground, exposure levels are conservatively estimated to be 2.4% of the public exposure limit, and for any person at the nearest building, the public exposure limit is conservatively estimated to be 0.33% of the public exposure limit. The city cannot regulate the topic of RF emissions beyond requesting information to substantiate a project's compliance with the FCC standards for the RF emissions. The applicant, as mentioned, has demonstrated its facility will comply with the FCC RF standards for public exposure limits, and since the applicant has provided that relevant information prepared by a qualified professional engineer to demonstrate compliance, the project must be considered safe from the standpoint of RF emissions. For the record, all public comments received by staff regarding the proposed project have been forwarded to the Planning Commission for consideration. And additionally, the city notified Jefferson Union High School District on May 25th of this upcoming Planning Commission hearing for the specific purpose of allowing them sufficient time to notify parents and school staff. As detailed in the staff report, the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act because it involves the installation of small new equipment. The proposed project would improve signal quality in the area and would provide better access to fast, reliable wireless telephone and data communications. The proposed small cell facility is slender and visually unobtrusive design that will be painted to closely match the existing utility pole, and these measures have resulted in a facility design that causes minimal visual impact for observers. The proposed project meets the municipal code requirements and the use permit findings, therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the proposed project. That concludes the staff report, and as you know, the applicant team is also, has also prepared a presentation for the commission tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions at this point for staff before we move on to the applicant? Commissioner Big Stick.
Lots and lots of questions. Thank you very much. So I, it was mentioned briefly, I want to go back over it one more time because I think basically all the feedback was the 5G thing, which first of all, as I came to understand from Verizon, there is nothing 5G about this product whatsoever, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. And I appreciate that even if it were 5G, we couldn't vote based on that. So I just, one more time, any? anything that has to do with radio frequency, that's not something we can base our vote on, period, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And just one more thing to make sure that that has gotten out of the way. If there was any element of anything that had to do with 5G, we're talking about one antenna over there, and if if something bigger like that were to be implemented, that would that this little antenna would not be a make it or break it if and when such a thing ever comes down the pike. Is that a fair assessment?
Well, I'm not sure I understand the question, Commissioner Big Stick. Perhaps you could formulate it in a different way.
Sure. If there ever is going to be a conversation about 5G, that's probably not a conversation that is going to have a lot to do with one little antenna. If that ever were to be a conversation, that would be a citywide thing. That wouldn't be, you know, one antenna being what everything is based around, right?
Well, if I'm understanding your question, the deployment of 5G technology is not a citywide conversation so much as it is a nationwide conversation for purposes of the United States through the federal government, having primary jurisdiction over the deployment of wireless technology such as 5G. And so the federal government has already taken significant steps to further the deployment of 5G technology. And from what I understand, it's largely a matter of carriers catching up to deploy that technology at the times that they think is appropriate for their particular networks, their capital investment strategies, and their ability to have the technology ready at the right time. And so there's very little the city has as far as input into individual site deployment of 5G, where the city and its residents and to some extent its elected officials have input is at the federal level through legislators and through public comment opportunities on federal regulations governing wireless technology. And so in recent years, there have been some very notable rulemaking processes at the FCC where hundreds, if not thousands, of local jurisdictions have commented. And ultimately, at least one of them has ended up in litigation, which is working its way through the courts. But all of that is to say, this decision-making for 5G deployment is handled at the federal level. And for all intents and purposes, as I understand it, local input into that is preempted other than the limited aesthetic review that we have on a site-by-site basis, such as the use permit that we're reviewing tonight.
Thank you very much. And my final question on that topic before I move on from it. If this particular antenna were ever to be modified for such a technology, it would have to come before us again, correct?
That really depends on the physical form factor of the modification. Among those rulemaking processes that I alluded to a moment ago, one of them was very meaningful a few years back and defined what was a substantial modification to an existing facility. And so what that means is once the local agency like the City of Pacifica grants a discretionary permit for a facility, many types of additional modifications can be made without requiring further discretionary review. And so nearly every application that I've seen come to the city for a facility that's already been approved has fallen well below those thresholds for modifications. They require very significant height increases or horizontal projection increases in order to allow the city to impose a discretionary review process on those modifications. So what you're likely to see if this facility is permitted, just like every other permitted wireless facility in Pacifica, is that most future modifications would be handled through the building permit process. The city staff does still request and review RF emissions information much the same way as the commission is reviewing the information tonight to ensure that those building permit level modifications do comply with the RF emissions standards. But for most situations, you will not see those modifications come to the commission.
Okay. So in that case, one more question on that end, and I'm asking it because we received a lot of public feedback specifically on the 5G question. There was a petition that came to us that seemed to have like two or some odd people on it, and it's involving a school, which makes it, I think, in terms of the neighborhood. And I want to make sure that the public is as fully addressed as possible before getting past this. And the question is, would it be possible to put a condition of approval in that if there was to be a modification to the hardware itself to allow for it to be 5G, it would have to come before us?
I do not believe there is such a way to impose a condition of that type, but perhaps my colleagues in the planning team or the assistant city attorney could opine further.
Thank you.
The city wouldn't be able to have that come back to the planning commission in the future.
Okay. So that's as much as I can beat that horse at this point. But I am happy to report for anyone who's watching right now, we're not discussing 5G. Now, I have a bunch of other questions that have nothing to do with 5G because that, you know, as I was reading all the public comment, that's where I thought I should take that as much as I could.
Maybe, maybe I see it at least one other hand. Maybe we could go ahead and take a comment and then come back or a question from another commissioner and come back to you. Would that be all right?
Oh, that's fine by me. I do have more questions afterward.
Thank you. Before we move on, I just want to clarify one point from Ms. Usher's presentation. The city planning staff notified the Jefferson Union High School District on March twenty-fifth, not May twenty-fifth, of course. So we did provide ample notice of the public hearing to the school district and gave them the opportunity to share that with their community to the extent that they saw fit.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell, did you have your hand up, or was that something that? Okay. Well, we'll come back to Commissioner Big Stick, then I thought I saw another hand.
Okay, thank you very much. So there are a number of alternatives discussed, and I appreciate some of my questions probably are for Verizon themselves. But are there? So first of all, like, how many homes, do we know about how many homes this would affect, or is the target for the range of the antenna just the high school? What kind of range are we talking about? Who are the customers who are going to be served by this?
I would defer to the applicant, if you don't mind, Commissioner.
No, no problem at all. Like I said, I'm sure a lot of these questions are. So my other question was, I recall that about a year ago, we were going to hear not just this antenna, but a couple others. One, more or less in this neighborhood, and the other on the other side of town. So I'm curious, I guess, what the process was that got us there, because originally, it was this one and two others. Where are the other two at in process? Is there a reason why the other two weren't brought back with this particular one? There was also something mentioned about tolling, a tolling agreement between the city and Verizon. So I'm kind of wondering what that means and if that has something to do with the other.
Sure, yeah. Let me touch on that, and the applicant may also elaborate further. The, I believe there were three applications by this applicant. And one was on Monterey, and that one is no longer an application, so that one's been withdrawn. The other one, you recall, is proposed on Redwood, and you may see that coming back to you in the near future. But that one isn't complete. At this time, the applicant's revising the project plans. So that one is in the works, and maybe back to you in the near future for deliberation.
Okay, thank you. I have questions about the alternatives, but I think those are probably better for the Verizon representatives. So I guess my one other question for city staff is, do we have a city engineer with us tonight? And if so, has a city engineer recently looked at that particular poll we're discussing this evening?
So I'll handle this one. If you mean a city engineer for purposes of the public right-of-way, the Public Works Department and the city engineering team has reviewed the application for its relationship to the public right-of-way. However, it's my understanding that the physical form of the pole is primarily regulated by the Joint Pole Agency, or Association rather, the JPA that owns the pole. And so issues related to its structure are a matter for that JPA, not to be confused with the public JPA. That's just the name of this entity that owns the poles. It's a consortium of utility providers and others that locate infrastructure on utility poles. And so with that in mind, it's not a city-owned utility pole in the sense that the city would have records on its maintenance and take steps to maintain it or replace it and the like.
So the JPA is the one who would have that information? And do we happen to, I mean, first of all, do we have a representative of that JPA here now? And second of all, do we know the last time they looked at the physical well-being of that pole?
I do not believe that there is a representative from the JPA participating in tonight's hearing. We did route this to our building official, who is in the planning department and who generally makes evaluations of concern about structural modifications and so forth. He did not raise significant concerns or concerns of any type, to my knowledge, about this type of modification or structural concerns about its design. As far as utility pole modifications go, these are very small facilities that do not carry with it significant possibilities of changing the dynamics of the pole. That said, the Joint Pole Agency or Association does review these requests carefully and applies California PUC and other standards to review them, and the applicant may be able to elaborate on what that structural review process entails on their end.
Okay, thank you. I'm very interested in when the last time the physical well-being of that pole was reviewed. I'm hoping to get an actual date before the end of the night, because I just had a laugh, had some serious concerns about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands at this point. I think what I will do is go ahead then and ask the applicant to go ahead and make any presentation they care to with respect to this application.
Yeah, Joanna, what we need to do is have me request the production team to go ahead and focus on my speaker screen, and then hopefully, the presentation will come through clearly, and you can just ask me to advance the slides as you go.
Okay, sounds good. I'll let you know if I run into any technical difficulties, but things seem to be moving really smoothly.
And PCTV, if you could go ahead and pull up the presentation that's on my screen, I'd love to share.
Perfect, I can see it.
Right, yeah, looks like we're ready to go. Thanks.
All right, is it possible to put it into the slideshow mode? Or you prefer this way?
You know, I have a dual-screen setup, and when I did that, it pulled up the second screen from PowerPoint for the presenter, and so I don't know. I lose all of the zoom functions at that point.
Oh, no worries. I know how that is. Okay, we can work with this. Hopefully, you guys can see it all. Okay, so, good evening, commissioners. Thank you very much for your time tonight. My name is Joanna Wang. I'm Government Affairs Manager with Modus, an authorized representative of Verizon Wireless. Our firm specializes in site development of wireless facilities on behalf of major carriers. In attendance tonight, I also have Jacob Olander, who's a project manager with Modus, who can speak to any PG&E engineering and design standards, as well as Bill Hammett, representative and licensed engineer at Hammond Edison Consulting, who is an independent third-party engineering firm who completed the radio frequency compliance and safety report, as well as the interference study, and is available to answer any questions you guys might have related to health and safety that might likely come up. Next slide, please, Christian. Thank you. All right. So in the presentation, I'm going to cover and start by covering the consumer usage trends that we're seeing and how small cells fit into the wireless ecosystem to address those demands as well, and then turn to the project specifics. Thank you. So heavy consumer reliance on wireless technologies, remote services, and really the expectation of connected mobility is driving the need for continued network extension. Wireless communication services are not just a luxury, they're a necessity. The average American, North American household has thirteen connected devices, and the demand on the network necessitates new infrastructure in order to provide reliable services. In two thousand seventeen, the average user consumed about seven gigabytes of data per month. Based off current projections, by two thousand twenty-three, those consumption rates will increase to about forty-eight gigabytes of data per month per user. In two thousand eighteen, the CDC reported that fifty-five percent of American households are now without traditional landlines and wireless only, which means that number's only going to increase as residents continue to opt out of landline services. And, you know, there's also an important public safety component in all of this. The National Highway Traffic Administration statistics indicate that seventy-six percent of nine-one-one calls originate from a cellphone. Next slide. So the wireless ecosystem that's needed to meet this demand requires really a combination of solutions. The networks are mainly comprised of macro facilities, and small cells help supplement these existing macros. They don't replace them. They supplement them by one, offloading traffic from all of the nearby macros while also providing localized data capacity. They do operate at lower powers and higher frequencies, so the signal travels less. And as a result, they really need to be located in targeted locations that are closer to the end-users to optimize network performance. They work best in highly densely populated areas or areas with challenging topography hills and trees. Next. Next, you'll see, this is an aerial, a three-D aerial of the proposed project site near Terranova High School. The objective here is really to provide enhanced communication services, both data and voice to students, pedestrians, motorists nearby, visitors, residents in the area, as well as emergency services and first responders who might need to service the school and that neighboring community. As I'm sure all of the commissioners are familiar with this area, and as evidenced by the image, you can see that the target service area is located in a valley. Its topography of hills and trees makes it a challenging area to serve. And all of that field obstruction can make it difficult for the signal to really penetrate and reach the end-users. Next slide you'll see in front of you is really just a chronology of the project timeline. Verizon has been actively working to improve service in this area actually for the last four years. The use permit applications were first submitted in February of two thousand eighteen, but the project itself was kicked off in August two thousand sixteen, at which time Verizon engineers identified this area as an area which required improved service. Since then, Verizon Wireless has been working on its due diligence. It has conducted multiple field analysis, design iterations, and engineering. Since the application was submitted, there have been three different design iterations, reducing the radio count to minimize the bulk on the pole, as well as reducing the antenna height from four feet to two feet. And all of that due diligence has really culminated into tonight's planning commission. The next slide you'll see is a photo rendering of the facility, what's existing and what's proposed. This is looking southeast from Terranova Boulevard. The canister antenna at the top and the equipment, radio equipment on the pole are painted to match to help camouflage the facility as much as possible. The next site, in the next picture, is an additional view of the facility looking northwest from Terranova Boulevard. And the next slide is is a picture excerpt from the plan set of the elevation page. It shows here what the facility is comprised of, which is one two-foot antenna, two radios transmitting 4G frequencies. As Kristi mentioned, you know, as part of the conversation earlier, this is not a 5G facility. It is going to be transmitting 4G frequencies. It also has a smart meter and power disconnect and the associated conduits. This is a picture of the alternatives analysis and all of the different utility poles that Verizon Wireless evaluated. There was a total of eight solutions in the area that we There was a total of eight solutions in the area that we reviewed. The site selection process really consists of, first Verizon's engineer identifying where there's a target service area based on data analysis of their existing network and traffic congestion. Two, what's available data capacity on their network? And then three, the proximity of other facilities. After they identify a service need, they engage firms such as Modus to identify potential solutions to service that area. Modus evaluates sites based off of technical feasibility, engineering standards, including California Public Utilities Code, General Order 95. They also evaluate local zoning and wireless ordinances to make sure any design proposed complies, design and sighting complies with those ordinances. And then also takes into account community impacts, including view obstruction. Ultimately, we make a recommendation on what we believe is the least intrusive means to provide the necessary service. So in this case, and as you can see, there was a total of eight different locations that we evaluated. Five of them were ruled out because of EG&E engineering standards. They had EG&E operable equipment, primary risers, capacitor banks, switches that do not allow third party communications equipment installed on them. Of the remaining two alternatives, one which is alternate one at the top of the image there, it was technically feasible but deemed more visually intrusive. It is closer to residences at that part of Terranova Boulevard and was just considered more visually intrusive. The other and last alternative that was technically feasible but was not pursued is alternate seven there near the baseball field. That was deemed not viable because of the existing tree coverage in the area that would have made it difficult to service the school. The trees in the area are 65 feet tall. Over the course of the project, Modus on behalf of Verizon Wireless did reach out to Terranova High School and Jefferson Union High School District on two separate occasions, informing them that we were looking to improve service to the area. We also spoke to them about the option of any ongoing tree maintenance during the lifetime of the facility. To see if that they would be able to facilitate tree maintenance to allow us to provide service if that was a feasible location, at which they responded that they were not willing and open to that. So that alternate location seven was ruled out. We didn't receive any other comments from the city or sorry, the school, other than the fact that they were unwilling to provide true trimming, ongoing tree maintenance. The next slide here shows that in addition to all of the sighting analysis and the design, Verizon Wireless is also required to comply with very strict guidelines under the FCC's radio frequency emissions. An independent third party analysis was conducted to evaluate the site's compliance. Hammond Edison and a representative of Hammond Edison is here to talk about the findings in the report. But ultimately, they found that the site operates well below a fraction of the FCC's limits and that it is in compliance with current FCC standards. In conclusion, the next slide, yes, thank you. Verizon really has, you know, we've been working on this site for the last four years. We've evaluated eight separate different locations. We've submitted three different design iterations. And we've believe that we've demonstrated that this location and design in front of you today is the least intrusive means to service, to provide the necessary service. As such, we are respectfully requesting that you, Commission, please adopt the planning department staff's recommendation to approve the project as conditioned and allow Verizon to move forward with the building permit to start providing the necessary and essential communication services to service the school. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions you guys may have.
Thank you, Ms. Wang. I guess the next question would be, Christian, whether or not we have public comment that hasn't already been received via email?
Yes, thank you Chair. We do. Give me a moment, please, to transition from the presentations to the public comments and I will get underway reading those. The first public comment we have is from Sunil Bhatt. He submitted public comments earlier and this, he begins by saying, "One last document to be submitted to the meeting is the comments from Pacifica residents who signed the petition submitted earlier today attached in PDF form." Again, the petition can be viewed at www.change.org/pacificafiveG. Thank you, Dr. Sunil Bhatt. In the attachment to that includes the printout from change.org, notes that says, "Greetings, Pacifica does not need questionably safe 5G cellular in its valleys. The risk to our residents is too high for minimal benefit. We need more reliable and safer internet and voice cellular coverage, which does not come from 5G." And the attachment goes on to list dozens of comments made by individual signatories to the change.org petition. Most of them seem to question the necessity of 5G, saying they don't trust it, poison, cancer, deep state control for evil. I don't want it at our schools or in our neighborhoods, in a variety of other similar types of comments opposing 5G communications facilities. The next comment we received is from Lisa Piera. She says, "Please let it be noted and entered into the record that we oppose the installation of 5G equipment on or near the campus of Terranova High School in Pacifica. We are parents of a freshman and oppose this proposal for the sake of her and all other students, as well as the environment. There exists worldwide concern and research by doctors and scientists on the health hazards and ill effects of 5G. Many scholarly articles and research exist. Please refer to a few articles here, though many more exist." And she provides two links to other articles. And she goes on to say, "Furthermore, the parents of Terranova were only notified on Friday, April 17th of this proposal via email by the principal. That is certainly not enough time for community members to consider it. Since it is shelter in place now, we respectfully request this agenda item be tabled for a future meeting when community members have more input. Some community members are not familiar with online meetings, et cetera, and they are essentially being denied the opportunity to express their concerns. Thank you for your consideration, Lisa Piera Treska and Michael Kuroga, residents of Montezuma Drive in Pacifica." And another comment we have from unidentified sender. There are three screenshots. One of them is a letter from the applicant. The other is apparently a phone screenshot with some technical information about Ericsson 5G equipment. And the third screenshot is another list of technical equipment from Ericsson 5G equipment. There's no further text or commentary in the body of the comment. The final comment that I've received is from Sunil Bhatt again. I believe he was the first commenter, says the antenna manufacturer website for Ericsson 4455 shows it as a 5G equipped antenna capable of mid-band 4T, 4R and 760 millimeter waves, which are 5G frequencies. And the comment includes a link to ericsson.com, Urban Wireless Street Solutions. Those are all of the public comments I have on this item.
Murdoch, so it's normally our practice to allow the applicant to respond to any public comments received, respond briefly anyway. If you have any desire Ms. Wang or anybody on your team to respond to any of the comments, you're certainly welcome to.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I mean, I think I know a lot of the comments are related to public health and safety and I think that I would like to cede my time to Mr. Bill Hammett, who's a subject matter expert in this area. I know another commissioner, Commissioner Big Stick had asked questions regarding the structural integrity of the pole and when it's evaluated. So before I cede to Mr. Ham, Mr. Hammett, I wanted to address that question. So as part of the due diligence period, we do meet with PG&E, walk the site with them, get their preliminary approval of the project. They do do their own structural calculations prior to any approval. And it's pretty, it's phased, so they actually will take another review of the application after Verizon Wireless receives a building permit. That way, they make sure that they review the application and the proposed project at the latest time in the entire review, due diligence period, so that they have the latest design in front of them, the latest equipment, and they can then subsequently make sure that they do their own structural analysis and engineering, independent of Verizon Wireless. Hopefully that helps. They will also test and treat the pole separately and make sure that, you know, if it requires a pole replacement because it's not in good condition, they will do so. They may require us to, if the design changes thereafter when PG&E is reviewing it, then we would come back, request a modification from a pole top extension to a pole replacement design and as a result, improve the structural integrity of the pole to make sure that it can withstand all of the structural load.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Hammett, we'll give you two minutes, say, to provide any additional information you'd like to provide.
Thank you. I think I'm unmuted now. My name is Bill Hammett, Chairman Commissioners. I appreciate the chance to speak to you remotely. I've been in your chambers on several occasions in the past. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of California and manage a firm of 20. We're located up in Sonoma. And a regular part of our practice is the calculation or the measurement where it's appropriate of radio frequency exposure conditions. Over the past 35 years, we've evaluated over 20,000 sites. So we've got a lot of experience. This is exactly what we do. McGraw Hill published the book I wrote on this topic and we're hired by carriers, we're hired by cities, we're hired by landlords. As engineers, our job is really straightforward. What are the exposure levels and how do they compare to the standards? I concur with staff's findings. You saw the, the actual text from my report that was shown on the screen. A maximum anywhere at ground is 2.4% of the limit. Maxima in the nearby building is 0.33, 300 times below the standard. I've reviewed the public comments in addition to the ones tonight, the ones that were submitted beforehand. Everybody seems to have a misunderstanding about the proposal. It is not 5G millimeter wave. Those frequencies are not being proposed at this site. And as was given in answer to one of the commissioners' questions, because of the tenfold difference in frequency, it would require new antennas, new transmitters, a completely new facility in order to accommodate the so-called 5G millimeter wave frequencies. It's just not part of this proposal. And so a lot of the other comments who are unrelated to the health, it was just the 5G that people seem to focus on. And it's unfortunate, but the misunderstanding, but it's not part of this proposal. And who knows if it would ever be part of a facility dislocation.
Thank you, Mr. Hammett. I guess then with that, we'll go ahead then and bring the matter back to the, back to the planning commission and, and receive any comment or discussion and move on from there. Mr. Campbell, Commissioner Campbell, did you have questions, comments?
Yeah. So my understanding is FCC hasn't yet rolled, rolled out the regulations for 5G in the United States, but we had a lot of comments that seemed to, a lot of people seemed to believe that this was a 5G application. Was there anything in the application that would, that could lead them to believe that? Or is there something that, that would, you know, make people believe that this is a 5G that we're missing?
Maybe someone from staff could, could help us, help us understand that or maybe give us our thoughts on that.
Ms. Usher can supplement my response. I do not recall reviewing any information that alluded to this being a 5G facility. I think perhaps there's still a widespread understanding of wireless communications facilities as being primarily large macro facilities with multiple four foot or six foot panel antennas and large equipment cabinets. And so anything smaller than that must be a 5G new type of facility. So if that's the case, one might reach the conclusion that because it's not a macro facility, it must be a 5G facility. But carriers have been rolling out these small cell facilities as they're known. There's, they sometimes used to be known as distributed or DAS systems. Those have been very small facilities and mounted on utility poles and light poles for years now. And so 5G, recognizing that it's not yet fully deployed, those other facilities were not 5G facilities and yet they bear resemblance in terms of their physical form to smaller types of modern facilities.
Christian, were these similar to the ones that were rolled out and throughout Valamar about five, six years ago?
Right. So these are similar in the sense that they're locating on existing utility poles. The meter configuration is similar in some respects, but the antenna design and location is quite different. The Valamar facility is used basically just over a one inch diameter antenna that was just over a foot tall. Most of those facilities had two of those on a bracket mounted on the side of the utility poles. These, this proposed facility has a canister antenna of two feet in height and I think several inches wide, maybe 10 or 11, but Christie can correct me, mounted at the top of the pole. And so they are different in their physical form.
Thank you, Mr. Murdoch. Commissioner Campbell, anything further? Commissioner Campbell, I'm sorry. Did you have a further questions or comments?
I'm all done. Sorry, I was looking for that unmute button.
Thank you. It looks like Commissioner Big Stick, your, your hand's up. So go ahead.
Thank you very much. So first of all, I wanted to thank the representatives of Verizon for being here and I am hearing and fully appreciate all the work that's gone into it. So first of all, thank you for doing everything you can to be as due diligence as possible. That having been said, here come the questions. So first of all, Terranova Boulevard is the only place you could conceivably put one of these facilities, right? Like when I was having a discussion with someone, they mentioned Everglades, they mentioned Picardo. These are kind of the streets that are along the football fields. It has to be in this area along Terranova in order to be viable. Is that correct?
The closer to most of the traffic, the better. It's more technically preferred. As I mentioned, these have shorter distances. They only go 500 to 1,000 feet, depending on the near field obstructions and elevation changes. So given that, it is preferred to be located closer to the school. They also work offline of site. The closer you get to Everglades and/or even north along Mason Drive in the residential community, it just gets to be way too far and you have way too many things in the way to actually reach the school. The buildings and stuff included.
So that alternative site number seven, when I was there, it, it didn't look like there were many trees directly by that pole. So it was counterintuitive to me. So are you talking about the trees that are kind of north, northeast of that pole that are the issue? Cause as I was looking at that alternative number seven pole, it tells, it doesn't look like there's trees immediately in its vicinity.
Yeah, I am. I mean, there are trees around 20 or 30 feet along Terranova, but also a little setback, which are significantly higher, the 65 footers that I was referencing. If you, I included a picture of alternate seven. I don't know if Christian is able to pull it up. So you got, all of the commissioners can take a quick look at really what it looks like from the site itself. Because the baseball field is elevated and then on top of that, you have the 65 foot trees for a site to work there and then be able to reach beyond the trees, not have signal degradation and actually reach the school. Keeping in mind that this facility is even further located away from the school than the proposed location, it's not going to have the same network performance, which is less preferred and, you know, technically challenging given the amount of students in the area and the traffic congestion at the school.
So I, I know you've already said it once, maybe even one and a half times. So bear with me as I ask you to answer this again specifically. This school is the primary target of this antenna, yeah?
Yes. When you have facilities like this, it provides capacity to the target, but it also helps. When you have facilities like this, it provides capacity to the target, but it also helps alleviate traffic. Congestion at other sites nearby. So whatever macro facility, and I don't have that proprietary information from Verizon. Whatever facility is currently serving this area will benefit also by having this small cell facility here offload it. So. There are broader impacts beyond just this high school.
Okay, but just to be clear, the high school is the primary target and then if it's helping other things along the way, that's even better. That's the view of.
Yeah, I think that's correct, see.
Okay. And in relation to that specific poll that we are discussing now. So you don't necessarily have in front of you when the last time somebody specifically looked at its condition. But I heard you suggest that if it should be found to be in a bad position, one of the answers could be to just replace that pole.
That's correct. Yeah, I don't have, I don't have unfortunately, the actual dates of when people did their field analysis throughout the four last four years. But that is correct, that they will, if it is not structurally sound, will PG&E will evaluate and request a pole replacement.
Okay, so we're talking now in terms of PG&E's facility upon which you would put your facility. And the reason I'm asking is because it it looks like what we're trying to avoid doing is a new structure. But it's not within the realm of impossibility. There could be a new structure, but we're trying to avoid that. So if this were to be a new structure because it's not sound. That would be PG&E putting it up and then it would be the same structure for your purposes.
Yes, that is correct. Verizon Wireless does do their own internal structural calculations, what we call OCAPS, and we have deemed that this site is. Structurally capable of holding the load, which is why we've designed it as such. But PG&E is the ultimate arbiter and they can at a later date decide that they feel that a structural upgrade is necessary. And if that is the case, post building permit, we would, after we receive PG&E engineering. And they decide to change the design, we would have to come back through building and propose a modification to the approved use permit.
Okay. And if it were decided that a new structure might be beneficial. Would it be possible to find a better place to put that new structure than the place we're discussing right now?
Like completely somewhere outside of this location?
Well, it would have to be in the same vicinity, obviously, but maybe not directly right there, maybe across the street and up on the hill a little bit, something like that.
I don't, I don't believe so, mostly because that utility line services existing distribution power. So. They would need to make sure that there's a support structure to withhold the existing lines. If we moved it elsewhere, they would have to completely reroute all of the existing distribution lines along Terranova Boulevard.
I got you. Okay, thank you very much. Those are my questions for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. Commissioner Berman, did you have questions or comments?
Yes, and just diving slightly deeper into Commissioner Big Stick's concerns, which I share the same concerns. Ms. Wang, thank you for explaining kind of the process with PG&E's vetting of the facility. Knowing that it's a PG&E pole, but just for the sake of the public listening. I wanted to come back to staff and confirm, although we are. Confident that PG&E will review the pole. Close to installation date. I just want to make sure that our Pacifica. Our city is in Public Works or the Building Department rather. Are actually reviewing the structural. Analysis during the building permit phase. So basically trying to get at. We're not purely relying on PG&E's review. That the city during the building permit phase will be doing its own review and at that point could determine. That the facility needs to be replaced if deemed unsafe.
Ms. Usher, can you speak to that?
Yeah, absolutely. That that is the correct process. The other interdepartmental departments. Public Works and Building will be involved in the engineering of the building plan check. They also reviewed it. The planning application, but they will be involved again. Assuming there is a building permit phase.
Assuming that there's a building permit phase?
If the, yeah, if the, I'm sorry, if the project's approved, if the project's approved. And then it would go to building permit. Then at that point, yeah, so for sure, the bill, yeah. If or when it comes to that phase, that then absolutely those departments will be involved in that review.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you. I don't see any more hands for the moment. I'll just go ahead and state that for myself that I really appreciate all the questions of my. Fellow commissioners, all the comments of the public to 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 suss out the these concerns. If there's anything that. The current circumstances have made clear to me is how essential. This kind of coverage is just in you know, in in light of the shelter in place orders that we're dealing with and the. Attempts to educate kids at school and, you know, things that we can do to relieve. Pressure on the the system, I think are absolutely warranted. I think that this has been very carefully vetted. And certainly I've been through quite a bit of due diligence. So I'm going to state that I'm just very much in favor of of this. Understanding the concerns have been expressed. I think they've been addressed to my satisfaction. Commissioner Berman.
Oh, sorry, that was a steel hand.
Thank you. Commissioner Big Stick.
So it seems like we're in the deliberation part of this item now. So here are a bunch of thoughts. And it's what I've come to at this point. And I appreciate Commissioner Niblin's point that this is essential. And that due diligence has been done to the best apparently of Verizon's ability. And I appreciate all the work and the reasons why this is essential. Getting back briefly to that pole, when I look at it, it looks like it's splintering at the base. It looks like the anchor holding it in place is rusty. I do believe that having the pole heightened to the place. That this antenna would heighten it, even just looking at the picture, let alone going there in person and checking it out. Would make the pole itself out of scale and thereby out of character with the neighborhood. And so I have safety concerns as well as design concerns. There was a mention of a safety button about eight feet up, which I think might not be high enough to. Preclude a wily teenager from getting to it somehow and doing harm to the structure or the pieces in place. And it, more than anything, well, no, not more than anything, along with all that, it greatly disturbs me that during this time in which. We're all struggling with our internal processes of. Concern about our health and safety, even though this could help us ultimately with health and safety. This was a barrage of of feedback we got from the public about their concern with health and safety. So on top of being concerned with their health, now they have this other reason, even if it's unfounded, to be concerned with their health. And it really bothers me that, also the petition which more than 200 people signed, that. Even if their concerns were addressed tonight during this meeting, that they can't be in the room to. Express a revised perspective and share that with us in real time. That many people right now, that really, really disturbs me and it makes it very difficult for me. So, I mean, for that reason alone, I'd like to continue it. I think my concerns about the poll ultimately were kind of addressed, but. Again, I'd like somebody to tell me, yes, you looked at the poll, it's not going to be coming down as a result of the construction. So I I'm not going to be able to vote for it tonight. It really bothers me that that many people don't have the opportunity to speak right now. So that's that's where I'm at with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. Any other comments at this point? I don't see any other comments. Is there anybody inclined to make a motion? Commissioner Berman.
I do. I have one question, actually. So appreciating Commissioner Big Stick's concerns and comment regarding the. Structural integrity of the pole. I guess staff, is there maybe a possibility we could add? A condition of approval specific to the pole's integrity? I know, I mean, I I do feel pretty confident that the process we have before us with. Not only PG&E but also with the Building Department and Public Works's review of the building permit will. Verify that the structural integrity of the pole is acceptable or will require something new. But is there any opportunity to enhance a condition, condition of approval specific to the structural integrity of the pole?
I think there probably is, as the use permit findings required for approval of the facility relate to public health and safety. We have in the past imposed such a condition. And I've been searching for that language for several minutes now without success, but I believe we did impose similar requirements on. The Valimar wireless right of way facilities that the city previously approved. So I'm going to continue searching here as the commission's deliberating in hopes of finding that language. It, in general, from what I recall from several years ago now, it's imposed a requirement for. The applicant to submit information to the satisfaction of our building official. That the method of attachment and the additional loading on the pole. Was satisfactory to meet applicable standards. And so that was just an explicit additional opportunity for the city to review that information and to ensure that. If it was already in the files of the JPA, that they were able to provide that and satisfy the requirement. In the in the event that it was not, provide some secondary information. Provided by the applicant to demonstrate the pole's structural integrity.
Yeah, I would be in favor of that if if we could find that language. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Commissioner Campbell, did you have comments or?
Yeah, I just. Wanted to, I think that would be a good condition if. Planning, if Mr. Murdock can find it. I don't want to second guess too much the building and engineering on this. It's a little bit out of our purview. But I think if we can get a condition that makes everyone more comfortable about the quality and condition of the pole, that would be useful. I remember going through this process with a fairly significant. Cell tower near Ocean Shore School a few years back. And one of the things that we came to learn was that. Health and safety concerns were not something that we could base a decision on. If certain exposure thresholds were met. And that's just, I believe it's the. 1996 Telecom Act. So just. For the members of the public that are watching this, it's not that we're not concerned about that. It's just that our authority to base a decision on. On those types of health concerns are not something we can actually. Vote yes or no on tonight. So. At the moment, if we can find that condition, I'd be inclined to support this project.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. Any other comments by any of the commissioners? I don't see any other comments. I think that, you know, again, pending the location of language or sort of a general direction that we adopt. As a condition of approval or include as a condition of approval, something along the lines. Of what Mr. Murdock was suggesting, we, you know, I think a motion would be in order if anybody's inclined to make it. I think I'm going to go ahead and make a motion then that the planning commission finds the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and approves use permit UP 9618. By adopting the attached resolution, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A, including the condition of approval that goes to. The the planning director and the the building director, however, was framed by Commissioner, by Mr. Murdock. The opportunity to review the structural integrity issues. To to their, to that satisfac- to the satisfaction of those officials or as the case may be. And incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference. And Commissioner, Mr. Murdock, could you, again, the the condition of approval that you were suggesting, did that involve, again, the planning director? Was the building official reviewing?
Well, I think what staff would like to propose, if the commission would entertain it, would perhaps be a five minute recess. To allow me to find the final adopted resolution in hopes of borrowing the exact language from. The prior hearings that we applied to another carrier. It is important that we treat these carriers as near. Equivalent with one another as we can. And so in hopes of achieving that goal, if we could take a short recess, I should be able to find the language.
I'm going to suggest we go ahead and reconvene at. Eight, is eight thirty-five enough time?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we'll we'll be in recess until eight thirty-five.
Yes, and it was a humbling experience. So apparently there was not a condition of approval. I certainly recall the discussion of the pole safety at the city council meetings as the items were appealed and/or called up, as applied to the various sites. We did for sure review information from the JPA primarily, prior to issuing a building permit. But we believe that was through a commitment by staff at the meetings as opposed to a condition of approval. And so during the recess, staff did put together language for the commission's consideration or a condition of approval to formalize that. And what we would propose is to include a condition that says, prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit information demonstrating adequate structural integrity of the pole with the subject facility installed to the satisfaction of the building official.
Okay, well, I've got my own motion on the, you know, there on the table. And I would want to incorporate by reference that proposed language. Commissioner Campbell, did you have a comment or question?
Well, I was going to second that, but I just wanted to say my approval of this is really contingent on, I'll say it again, that this is not a 5G mechanism and that this isn't any sort of a Trojan horse for a 5G to come in after our approval. From what I've read and from what I hear tonight, it doesn't appear to be the case. Looks like this is a straight 4G tower mechanism. But that's why I just want to get that on the record, that based on everything I've heard from the applicant, this is a 4G, not a 5G tower. And I really hope that there's nothing in here that we haven't seen or heard about tonight that would make it otherwise. That being said, I would second.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell. So we've got a motion and we have a second. And we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. Staff could help us with that.
Commissioner Berman?
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick?
No.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Krasky?
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin?
Yes.
The motion passes four votes in favor, one opposed.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wang and the rest of your team.
Thank you very much.
So we'll move on to the fourth item on our agenda, which is file number.
Oh, John, this is Rich. Sorry, I should have raised my hand. Before we move on, I'll need to recuse myself from this matter. After speaking with city attorney, I received a gift from one of the project proponents in February that would preclude me from voting on this project tonight. So at the advice of council, city council, I'm going to recuse myself. So I was told the way to do that will be to mute and turn off my video until the end of this deliberation.
Excellent. Well, thank you. We'll take leave of you for the moment then.
I'll see you on the other side.
Excellent, thanks. All right. Well, with that recusal noted, we'll move on then to file number 2019-030, Coastal Development Permit CDP 41319. Excuse me, filed by San Pedro Valley LLC to demolish an existing single-family residence, detached garage and barn to construct a new 1,753-square-foot, two-story, single-family residence, a 236-square-foot detached one-car garage and a 216-square-foot carport on a 3,516-square-foot lot located at 277 Kent Road. Accessor parcel number 023013030. The recommended sequel action on this matter is a Class III categorical exemption pursuant to Sequel Guidelines Section 15303. And staff's recommended action is to approve the project as conditioned. Go ahead and ask for a staff report, please.
Commissioner Niblin, before we move on to that, I am just taking a cue from Rich. I wanted to air my thing. I'm not recusing myself. I did briefly have a conversation with some of the residents of Pedro Point. And I just want, for the sake of transparency, I had a conversation with some of the residents of Pedro Point. We briefly talked about this property. It's not influencing my judgment or deliberation in any way, but I wanted to make sure that was on record.
Thank you for sharing that. Then we'll go ahead and ask staff for a report on the matter.
Thank you, Chairman. As just introduced, this application for your consideration tonight is a coastal development permit for the construction of a new two-story, single-family dwelling proposed on an existing developed lot located at 277 Kent Road in the Pedro Point Shelter Cove neighborhood. A detached one-car garage and carport is also proposed. Vehicle access is proposed off Kent Road. And this is in keeping with the existing single-family development pattern at the site and along the streetscape. The existing structures, including a single-family dwelling, detached garage and barn, are proposed to be demolished. The lot size is approximately 3,500 square feet and the proposed two-story residence is approximately 1,750 square feet. The project site is zone single-family residential and land uses surrounding the project site consists predominantly of single-family residences ranging from one to three stories in height. There is a three-story, single-family residence adjacent to the project site to the west. And the vacant property to the east is zone commercial. There are both residential and non-residential uses in the project vicinity. The city has received several comment letters regarding the proposed project, which have been forwarded to the Planning Commission. As analyzed in the staff report, the project fits squarely within the parameters for a categorical exemption. And no substantial evidence has been submitted to justify preparation of an EIR. The project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act because it includes the construction of a single-family residence in a zone that permits residential uses. The geotechnical report for the proposed project concludes that the improvements can be safely constructed and outlines various engineering methods to be followed and incorporated into the design and construction of the proposed building and improvements. Therefore, for the record, staff recommends the Planning Commission consider adding the following condition of approval to the proposed project. For the record, this proposed condition of approval for your consideration reads, "All recommendations detailed in the preliminary geotechnical investigation by Geo Forensics, Inc., dated November 2019 shall be incorporated into the project plans and approved by the building official prior to issuance of a building permit." Lastly, as described in the staff report, the proposed project complies with city development standards, including but not limited to setbacks, height, coverage and parking requirements. The proposed architectural style, detail, scales and materials of the proposed residence are also in keeping with the city's design guidelines. And lastly, the project also complies with the local coastal land use plan policies and standards. Therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the proposed coastal development permit. That concludes the staff presentation. And again, we also have the applicants available tonight to present as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that report. I'll go ahead and ask my colleagues on the commission whether there are any questions for staff. Commissioner Big Stick?
Thank you very much. So I had, I guess, two different flavors of questions. And one were community concerns and the other was the letter we received from the Coastal Commission. So the two main takeaway questions I had from community concerns, I guess if staff can say something about why we're looking at the property piecemeal. It's my understanding that the chunk we're looking at is residential and the other chunk is commercial. But if staff can further address that, maybe elaborate a little bit, that might be helpful.
Sure. So Commissioner Big Stick is referring to another development application on file with the city adjacent to the project site. That application is being processed. They are separate applications on separate timelines and approval tracks. And they are complete at different times and require different analysis. But we did for background, in some context, provide the proposal that was submitted at the time the staff report was being prepared, just for some context for you. But they are separate applications being reviewed separately and are on different timelines of review and completeness and that sort of thing.
Thank you very much. And then I would kind of dovetail with the Coastal Commission letter we received. And I guess my first question is, can you give us a basic assessment of what the erosion risk is with this property, especially on the north end facing the ocean?
Yes. Let's see. So the erosion risk, the geotechnical report quoted a rate of, looking at my notes, for 50 years, a five-to-17-foot rate and at 100 years, a 10-to-35-foot rate is what we have on file from the geotechnical report.
And I think what's important to note is the applicant has his geotechnical engineer here this evening to address the technical aspects of the projected bluff erosion over the assumed 100-year life of this project. From what I understand from the applicant, the geotechnical engineer analyzed this issue, did evaluate among other factors, historical aerial photography to allow a very precise calculation of what actual erosion was in this very localized area. Other sources of projected or estimated bluff erosion, such as the USGS erosion rate quoted by the Coastal Commission in its updated comment email from earlier today. That's reliant upon much more generalized erosion information that typically is done at widely spaced intervals up and down the coast. You can imagine the USGS is approaching this issue on a regional basis in most cases over broad areas to understand how does erosion in Southern Pacifica compare to another region in Northern California, for example, broadly speaking. What all of these policies referenced by some of the commenters, as well as the Coastal Commission, lead to is the need for a site-specific geotechnical hazard analysis. And that's what the applicant with his geotechnical engineer has prepared. And so they can speak more to the details. But essentially, we've received the information that all of the related policies and maps and generalized modeling lead to, which is where there's a potential for an elevated risk, do that site-specific analysis and determine the actual on-the-ground conditions for a particular project site.
Thank you. And I feel like it's going to be a larger conversation a little later in the item. But one of the features that stuck out from the Coastal Commission recommendations were the idea of maximizing the setback, which would presumably be in the rear of the home between the edge. So it's a 20-foot setback as it's currently proposed. And it meets our requirement just fine. I'm curious, just based on that kind of vague language from the Coastal Commission on that very one point, maximize the setback, would it be possible to have a greater setback than that 20 feet? Would it be possible to move things forward a little bit to maximize the setback? Or is what we're looking at basically about as good as it's going to get for that one?
Well, I think the applicant should speak to what some of its considerations would be with modifying the project. I think just at a very high level, looking at the site plan, there's probably some room for moving the structure closer to Kent, just from a spatial standpoint. But anything beyond, you know, perhaps a few feet would probably require a rather sizable reduction in the floor area of the structure. And that would certainly have an impact on the floor plan, its usability, and ultimately its marketability as well.
Thank you. And I'm curious, after the other recommendations the Coastal Commission made, but I'm not but I'm not sure that now is the time or the place to start discussing those conditions that they're recommending. So I'm going to yield at this point and just kind of put a bookmark there because I think later on that will be where I would bring the conversation back to. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. Are there any other comments or questions for staff at this time? Not seeing any, I think what I'll do then is go ahead and move on to the stage of consideration that involves a presentation by the project applicant. So Mr. O'Connell, I see you there, and Mr. Brinkman, maybe you can go ahead and let us know how you're going to proceed.
Yeah, thank you for having us tonight. Christian, would you be able to pull up the slide deck?
Yes, just one moment, and PCTV, if you could shift over to my screen, that would be great, please.
Great. Yeah, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Mike O'Connell. I'm one of the applicants for this project. My partner, Mike Panisi, is also on the line. We have with us Brian Brinkman, who's our architect, Dan Dykman, our geotechnical engineer, and Chris Rogers, who is a biological consultant. And I'll give you a brief overview about some of the site considerations that we made while designing this. And then I'll turn it over to Dan, so he can talk more about bluff retreats and erosion. Next slide, please. So this is a substandard lot. It's 25 feet wide, but it's a little bit different from most of the substandard lots we see because of its depth. And the big advantage to this depth is we're able to, you know, not have kind of the typical 25-foot-wide development where you would see the carport and a single-car garage, and that kind of blocks the front of the house. We're able to separate those a little bit, which allows us to see more of the house and porch from the street. And we think it's a superior aesthetic design to kind of the typical substandard lot. Just a couple of things I wanted to point out on the setbacks. The existing house actually encroaches about six inches onto the neighboring property, so we're going to be cleaning that up. We still have a rather generous setback to the front and rear of the properties, and we're increasing the setbacks between the existing single-family home. Next slide, please. So this is a comparison of the two site plans. And one thing that we talked about with our historical consultants who helped us evaluate this property and the other properties in the area was to try to mimic the design of the existing site to the extent that we could. Not that the existing site is historical, but he thought it would be good if we could give a nod to, you know, positioning the garage in a similar way. So currently, the garage, it's very close to the street, it's a non-conforming setback. And so we've, you know, kind of kept the garage on the same side that it is, but we've pushed it back to have a compliant front setback to that garage. And then we've tried to position the house in a similar position as the existing house, of course, you know, meeting the setbacks for the current municipal code. Next slide, please. So some of the other site plan considerations that we tried to make while designing this was to optimize the view from the family room and the master bedroom as they look north towards the ocean in Lindemar Beach. The next-door neighbor has a kitchen window that we did not want to block on the northeast side of their house. That window gets a lot of morning light, and we thought it was important to stay back from that. We're working with the existing topography at the site. You know, we're not, sometimes on these projects with views, people want to build up the site with retaining walls and elevate the floor sort of artificially to maximize the view. And we're not doing that, we're sort of mimicking the elevation of the lower floor of the existing house. And then we're trying to minimize the amount that the detached garage and carport actually blocks the view of the house. We think it's a pretty good-looking elevation there from the street, and we're trying to not have the garage block that. Next slide, please. So these are just a couple of the renderings here. And I think the one that I wanted to point out is in the perspective view, in the view looking west, you can see that we're setback from the rear of the neighbor's property. We're setback from their rear window. And we think this, you know, maintains the light that they get in that kitchen window. Also helps with privacy issues since the back of the houses are kind of staggered, if you will. Next slide, please. So most of the comment letters, actually, I think all of the comment letters were concerned about the bluff retreat. And they reference, I think there's a little confusion because they reference the draft local coastal land use plan. And in that plan, portions of Pedro Point, this site are identified as sites that are potentially vulnerable to landslides. And I think there's a little bit of confusion amongst the commenters because that's really a vulnerability map. So it says to us that we need to do a site-specific investigation. And so that's what we did. Christian mentioned earlier this USGS analysis and some of the maps that they've published, which are, there's a disclaimer at the beginning of that document that actually says, "They're not intended for a comprehensive, detailed, site-specific analysis of bluff retreat." And so we're required to do one, and that's what Dan did for us. And he did that by analyzing some detailed historical aerial photography and developing a precise estimate of how much bluff retreat happens on an annual basis. I think he went all the way back to the early 1900s, but I'll let him confirm in a minute. And so his estimates are between .1 and .35 feet per year, which translates to up to 35 feet total, you know, during the design life of the structure. And I wanted to point out that the setback from the top of the bluff varies between 111 feet and 123 feet. So we think we're a pretty comfortable distance, you know, beyond what Dan's estimates are. They even fit within some of the more conservative estimates that we've seen that are not based on a site-specific analysis. And Christian, if you could go to the next slide, I can show you the map. This is just a quick sketch that I made to help illustrate this. So the blue line is the setback from the approximate top of the bank, top of the bluff, to the property line. So beyond the property line, we have another 21 feet. And that's how we came up with 111 feet and 123 feet setback to the actual structure. Dan, could you talk a little bit about your analysis?
Sure. We started with a conventional analysis whereby we take a look at historical aerial photographs. We prefer those because they are actually scaled, and we can do a lot of triangulation off of different points just to compare the geometries there. Because sometimes as you're flying over, you don't always get the plane directly over the top of the site, and we can adjust for that. Doing that analysis, we looked at photos going back as far as 1955 because prior to that, things are a little bit too grainy to pick up well the edges of the bluff in this area. We then took that all the way through, I think it was 2000 was the last aerial photo we looked at. So we looked at a 45-year period of aerial photos, taking a look at about three or four different points along the back of this property and its proximity to the bluff. We calculated out the rates over that 45-year period, and that's where we came up with a .1 to .35 feet per year. There have been some people who say that, oh, things are happening faster. So we actually went on to Google Earth earlier, last week, actually. And we took some measurements there. I'm not as happy with those because I don't like the accuracy of those. But we used those to see if we had any real change. And we came up with a slight, we came up with a significant increase in the rate over the period of 2002 to 2018, which is including some very heavy storm years in there. And we came up with a rate that ranged from .58 to .62 feet per year. Again, translating that at 200-year setback, you're still just barely encroaching into the northern corner of the property. You get back into the property approximately eight to 10 feet from the rear property line. So even at the 100 years, with assuming that the last 18 years are our new norm, we've still got plenty of room between what will be the bluff at that time and projected bluff and where the house is.
Great, thank you. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you. I guess then what we'll do is check with Mr. Murdock regarding public comment. Christian, do we have any additional comments besides the ones that were emailed to us before the meeting?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. It took me a minute to back out of the presentation. Let me check for the latest public comments. And we do not have any for this item.
Okay, in which case, we're going to go ahead and bring it back to the commission for questions and comment and discussion. Do we have any questions or comments or discussion from the commissioners? Okay. That being the case, is there any commissioner who would like to make a motion regarding this matter? Commissioner Big Stick, it looks like you might be having some issues with your audio there. Is that... Just want to make sure I'm not skipping over you. I don't see any commissioner who's indicated a desire to make a motion. I think I will go ahead and make a motion, that being the case. And I'm going to move that the planning commissioner finds the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approves coastal development permit CDP 41319 by adopting the attached resolution, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A, and incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
John, I was having significant difficulty with my audio.
I see.
I think I'm back now. Sorry about that. Is it too late?
Oh, it's not. I've made a motion, but I'm willing to withdraw my motion for the moment if you had questions or comment.
I have questions.
Well, go ahead and ask them.
Thank you very much. Let me make sure that my audio is, I'd like to put you on speaker so I can actually hear you. Well, I can hear you well enough, I guess. I'm not doing this. So just getting back, first of all, to my original question about the maximum setback. Have we addressed that? Is that, it's where it should, is it possible to maximize that setback any more than it already has?
Well, I guess that'd be a question, Mr. O'Connell and his crew, whether or not you believe you could move the structure any further back on the lot.
There is some space in between the house and the detached garage. So yeah, something on the order of a few feet would be easy to do. Anything more than that, you know, kind of throws off the architecture. If I could say one more thing about that, I have had, you know, discussions with our team about, you know, the setback and what's at the rear of the house. And, you know, would be possible to shrink that, you know, just a little bit without, you know, kind of making that space not functional, right? Because it's kind of a small house as it is, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. Did you have further questions about that or other matters?
Yeah, so mainly my questions are revolving the coastal commission's recommendations. And I guess my question for staff is along shelter. So I'm going to take a step back because this is kind of a tangential question, even though it does affect the property. And the question is, is there city infrastructure along that Shelter Cove Road that might need armoring by the city in the future? And I ask that question because I'm trying to get out whether or not that concern by the coastal commission is even relevant for this project. And if the city already supersedes this project, then it's not relevant, in my view.
I'm not aware of any public infrastructure between this project site and the ocean. I don't know if other staff are aware of any.
That is my understanding as well. Or my, I am also not aware of any infrastructure in that area. I'll also note that I believe that that may be a private road and may be an unaccepted right-of-way. I want to confirm with Christian, which that doesn't mean that the city may not have an easement, but it kind of leads to that there more than likely isn't public infrastructure there.
Right, thank you, Tina. I'm not aware of any public interest in that area in terms of publicly held easements or other rights or rights of way in that location. To my knowledge, that segment is a private street. And I think, as many of us know, used to provide access to the Shelter Cove development at the west end of the Pedro Point until the road washed out several decades ago and was not rebuilt.
Okay, I hear you. So I guess the heart of my question really is this letter that we got. How much should we be scrutinizing these recommended conditions from the coastal commission? Would staff recommend putting these conditions into the conditions of approval?
So we thought very carefully about the coastal commission's revised comments. We discussed the comments internally among staff. I don't feel like any of the staff believed that we ought to include them or else we likely would have brought that up as part of our staff presentation. I think they touch on issues that are well explained and that there's a policy basis for in the city's draft LCP, which has worked through the process at the city and will be working through the coastal commission process. Some of these policies, once part of the city's certified LCP, will allow the city to impose conditions of approval of this sort. But short of that, we haven't found evidence yet to support imposing them on an ad hoc basis for this project alone. The only exception to that would be the first part of the numbered, number-one comment, which read, "No future shoreline or bluff protection for this residence and removal of the structure if and when it is threatened." Our current LCP does have language in policy number 26, I believe it is, that does indicate that structures being developed now, new development shall not require shoreline protection to be built. And so there is a policy basis in the city's documents to impose that first part of it. But we feel like the remainder of it probably would not be appropriate at this time.
Hey, were you referencing coastal act policy number 26?
It's identified as that in the 1980 LCP, yes.
Okay, I was looking at that, the second part, "Assure stability and structural integrity and neither create nor contribute significantly to erosion, geologic instability or destruction of the site or surrounding area." And I was thinking that maybe the coastal commission recommendations kind of address that specific concern.
Well, I read that coastal act policy to relate to the effect that the shoreline armoring device has on the coastline as opposed to the project. So I think it's generally understood that in most cases, shoreline protection devices do adversely impact the coastline in the way described in that coastal act policy. And so if one were able to engineer a shoreline protection device that did not have those results, perhaps it could be constructed compliant with the policy. But in nearly every case, if not all that I'm aware of, any new shoreline protection device would not be able to satisfy that policy and therefore would be prohibited for new development.
And forgive me, it's kind of strange to work that much with the updated LCP and have it passed by council for all intents and purposes and then not be able to go and use it. It, it's a kind of a weird limbo place to be in. As I read that third suggested condition of approval by the coastal commission, it seems to serve to try and basically indemnify and hold harmless the city should a worst case scenario happen with this property. And so I became very interested in that third condition, just from the standpoint of, again, worst case scenario and making sure the city was well protected. Is it your staff's view that that condition is not necessary at this time?
I, I believe that's the case. This issue comes up from time to time and the city attorney can do a much better job than I can explaining what indemnities there are to the city under its permitting authority when it makes, you know, a well-founded action based on evidence. And so perhaps Ms. Sharma can explain further.
Yeah, so generally cities, there, there are ways that we would be able to, we, there's ways to bring lawsuits against cities through the Government Claims Act. We feel that, or at least from my point of view, if we were to put in this condition here and we haven't put in this, a similar sort of condition in other projects, that that would be problematic and it would send the wrong message. And so I would be concerned about adding that language here and not having had, inserting that language in other projects. And, and that could bring on legal risks with respect to those other developments. So I don't recommend inserting that language currently for this project.
That makes sense to me, thank you. And then one final question, I suppose, for Mr. Brinkman. And I, my recollections foggy at this moment. Were there any trees involved to try and stabilize the hillside to the north at all? Or is that something that there's interest in?
I don't understand the question. Are we, are we planting trees as part of the project?
Yes, to stabilize the, the hillside, the slope in, in the rear.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't feel like it's unstable and, and much of that slope is not on the property. It's, it's within the former Shelter Cove right of way or shore, shoreside right of way.
So all that being said, and just trying to do my due diligence, and I, I am in favor of this project. It's an interesting project and the design is interesting. I do have interest in maximizing that rear setback as was recommended as much as possible. I don't know if that is, comes from us so much as as a suggestion. Or if there is a condition of approval that could be made, I would be in favor of that. But overall, I'm very much in favor of this project.
And as far as increasing the rear setback and based on the analysis that Dan has done to date, we don't, we don't feel like that is necessary. So unless staff or the commission, you know, feel, feel otherwise, we'd be, we'd be willing to entertain a, you know, two or, two or three foot reduction between the house and the garage, which would give us another, another couple of feet. But I think that the, the, the thing we're trying to mitigate against at that scale, you know, two or three feet, you know, doesn't, doesn't make or break it.
I, I agree. I don't think it makes or breaks it on either end of the spectrum. I'm interested in that if the rest of the commission has interest in it. But otherwise, I, I'm about as content as I think I can be. And again, I, I do, I like the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. Commissioner Berman.
Yeah, in regard to the setback, unless staff has a, a strong opinion to incorporate further setback, I guess, reduction or increases, I don't feel the need in my review of the project, especially understanding the geotechnical investigation to date. And given the significant buffer that we already have or that is already present on this design. I mean, I do appreciate the architectural design to allow for more visual of the front of the house, which is a little more appealing than the typical just looking at the garage or a carport. And I think it does allow for a better feel in the neighborhood, at least I would imagine so. So I don't feel a couple additional feet would make me feel any differently, in my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Yeah, see any other?
So Commissioner Kraski here. I think it's a good project. I'm in favor of it. So I would like to go ahead and second your motion, Chair Nibblin, to approve it, the project.
Thank you. So just, I'll, I'll go ahead and just restate my, my motion that has just been seconded. And that was a move that the planning commission find the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, that the commission approved the coastal development permit CDP 41319 by adopting the attached resolution, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A, and incorporate all maps and testimony into the record by reference. That was my motion and I, Commissioner Kraski, yeah.
Chair Nibblin, would you entertain modifying your motion to incorporate the additional condition of approval read during the staff presentation by Ms. Usher? Related incorporation of the geotechnical recommendations?
Yes, again, the incorporation of the geotechnical recommendations as, as stated by Ms. Usher in her staff report.
Thank you, Chair.
And I, I take it the second would, would stand for that.
It's correct.
Thank you. So that's the motion, the second. And again, we'll need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Berman?
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraski?
Yes.
Commissioner Nibblin?
Yes.
That passes four votes in favor, none opposed, and one abstention.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. That's our consideration of item four. Looks like then we'll move on to the portion of the agenda that's set for commission communications. I believe that Commissioner Campbell's rejoined it. So are there any commission communications? Commissioner Big Stick? Commissioner Big Stick, did you have any commission communications?
I apologize, I didn't unmute. I was having a conversation with the staff member, a high ranking staff member, and it was decided that so it was an appropriate time to wear a mask. I should wear one. And now I think is an appropriate time just to remind everyone that San McTeo County has gone ahead got in the direction of mandatory mask wearing. And I believe if I'm not mistaken, that will be put into full effect enforced as of Wednesday morning at 8:00 AM. So I just wanted to remind everyone that now is a good time to stay safe and do their due diligence. And we can even have a little fun with it if we put a little effort into it. Thank you.
I thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. And thank you for your work and the work of all your colleagues, keeping us supplied.
We do what we can, thank you.
Commissioner Berman?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank staff and my fellow commissioners and as well as the applicants for being so flexible with the shelter in place and setting up a very well organized video conference for our meeting. I think, I'm sure much of the public appreciates all that effort and I certainly appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Yeah, I'd echo that. This is fantastic work on staff's part, you know, putting this together. Any other communications? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to staff communications.
So I just had one thing I wanted to say, which was to thank, express my gratitude and gratitude on behalf of the entire staff to Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Kraski. At their last meeting, the city council appointed three new planning commissioners. They will be starting on with your first meeting in May, May 4th. So this will be Ryan and Rich's last meeting. And so again, thank you very much. You guys have been great to work with and the staff really appreciates both of you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say I really appreciated working with staff over the years. Everyone at 1800 Francisco Boulevard. The city is blessed to have a very professional and passionate staff. So it's been my pleasure working with you and with all my fellow commissioners. Thank you.
Thank Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Kraski, looks like you were going to jump in there as well.
Oh, no, it's my pleasure serving on the commission these last few years and working with you all. So thank you.
Well, it's been fantastic having you both as colleagues. I know I speak for everybody and the city's really benefited just from your insights and your, and your diligence and sort of helping get all these projects and initiatives over time. Well, I think then absent any other comment or, or concerns expressed or at the point for adjournments, and does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Big Stick?
Yeah, and one more time, thank you, Commissioner Kraski, Commissioner Campbell, and thank you for staff for making this all go smooth as silk. And that being said, I, I make a motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Excellent, Commissioner Berman. Can we get a roll call for adjournment then?
Commissioner Berman?
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraski?
Yes.
Commissioner Nibblin?
Yes, thank you. We're adjourned. Thanks and have a safe evening and rest of week.
Thank you.